Good evening, everyone. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of March twenty third, twenty twenty two. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I have pledged allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty.
And justice.
And justice for all.
You, everyone. Thank you for your patience. I'm having a bit of technical difficulty. Hopefully that's been resolved. Um, we appreciate your help, Danielle. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, we have, uh, tonight a public hearing that will start off with, uh, don't have any, um, regular public comments, uh, to share with you. I will share the screen, however. So folks at home could see the agenda. Okay, very good. So as I said before, we have the public hearing on the water district, uh, rates. Um, for the folks at home, a few years back, the water department came to the town board and said that they would, um, like to adjust the water rates, uh, by five percent each year for a period of five years to avoid what other, um, water districts and communities have experienced, which is large increases in order to pay for, um, important capital projects. In our case, they're looking at, you know, somewhere down the road tackling the water tank and also some, some of the branch lines. The water district dates back now, uh, over fifty years. So in lieu of having that experience where users wake up one day and have, uh, a very large scale increase, I think, typically, uh, they experience something like a doubling, um, when, uh, the new system was put in. And so, um, we are entertaining, um, you know, the annual increase of five percent. Uh, that's the public hearing and the first item on the agenda. There's also a resolution to award a contract on the fast chargers. Um, if you've been following along, we were recipients of grant funds to pay for, uh, the entire project to fast chargers here at Town Hall. Um, that could be used by all makes and models. Um, also, there's a resolution to award contract on a short-term rental administration, um, that would do most of the, uh, paperwork, uh, for us actually online. Um, the beneficial for both the town and for S T R operators. We have a resolution number four, uh, on the agenda to accept a rose and easements for tradition. That's the development over there by, um, the Hoffman Barn on Old Farm Road. They're now looking to, um, uh, approve, uh, phase six. So they'd like to go ahead and file that. So we've got some ministerial work associated with that. Um, we are also joined tonight by a few individuals, um, on our economic development committee and/or Red Hook responds to discuss potential C D B G, um, COVID, uh, grant opportunities. Uh, and then last, um, item is a discussion on a pilot program at the recycling center where, um, our residents would be able to bring their air conditioners and, uh, other appliances where we would actually remove the dangerous refrigerants, um, dangerous in the sense, uh, to, uh, the atmosphere and to the ozone. And those are the six items that we have for this evening. So, um, at this time, Deanna, could I ask you if you'd be kind enough to read the notice of public hearing?
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the Town of Red Hook on March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two at seven thirty-five P M local time. To hear all interested persons on proposed modification of the water rates and charges for Water District Number One. The Red Hook Water Board has recommended modification of the water rates and charges to increase the minimum rate from forty-seven dollars and twelve cents to forty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents for up to nine thousand gallons. And from five dollars and seventy-three cents to six dollars and two cents per one thousand gallons over nine thousand as further set forth in the schedule on file with the town clerk. Due to the ongoing COVID pandemic, the Town Hall is closed to the general public except by appointment until further notice. Pursuant to and to the extent permitted by laws of chap, uh, laws of twenty-twenty-one, chapter four seventeen and executive order eleven, as extended, the public will not be permitted to attend in person. Board members are expected to participate in the public hearing via teleconference or video conference. Please refer to the meeting agenda to be posted on the town website at W W W dot redhook dot org, listing a specific link which will allow the public to view and listen to the proceedings live, which is expected to be available at W W W dot Panda TV twenty-three dot org. Click on watch live. Project documents will be posted with the meeting agenda on the town's website. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard as follows. One, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email or telephone in advance of the hearing to townclerk@redhook.org and eight four five seven five eight four six zero six by four o'clock P M the day of the hearing. Please note Water District Number One, water rate increase in the subject. Two, written comments may be dropped in the town's drop box in advance of the hearing at the Town Hall, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, one two five seven one by four o'clock P M the day of the hearing. Observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. All comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Three, all interested persons may register in advance to participate remotely via Zoom. To register, please send your email name and telephone number to townclerk@redhook.org by four o'clock P M on the day of the hearing. Only in the event that executive order number eleven is not further extended or participation by Zoom is not otherwise permitted by law as of the date of the hearing, a notice will be posted on the town's website. And in that event, persons would be permitted to provide comments at the Town Hall, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, one two five seven one. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance of the, at the above address or by phone eight four five seven five eight four six zero six so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated March eighth, twenty-twenty-two, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Very good. Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Um, and if I could, I'd like to start with, uh, we did receive written comments as we encouraged folks to, uh, to make those, and I'd like to just read those if I could. Uh, Claire Horst writes to us, uh, today in regard to the water rate increase. I'd like to see this delayed if possible. Our rates increased only six months ago. I understand the eventual need for money for repairs, but at this time, the increase might cause a hardship for many people right now. Right now gasoline prices are ridiculously high, heating oil and electric costs have risen, food prices have skyrocketed. Maybe this would be a time for you, the board, to hold off on this increase too. Please seriously consider this, Claire Horst. And Claire, uh, mentions that she's a, uh, Water District resident in the email. Renee O'Neil also writes to us, uh, Town of Red Hook Town Board, I'm writing to you with regards to tonight's public hearing on the proposed modification of the water rates and charges for Water District Number One, and I wanted to offer my comments. The Red Hook Water Board has recommended modification of the water rates and charges to increase the minimum rate from forty-seven dollars and twelve cents to forty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents for up to nine thousand gallons. And from five dollars and seventy-three cents to six dollars and two cents per one hundred thousand gallons over that nine thousand as further set forth in the schedule on file with the town clerk. While you may think the recommended, recommended modifications are minimal, the Town Board recently approved an increase in our water rates in March twenty-twenty-one, but the rates went into effect October twenty-twenty-one after concerned taxpayers like myself reached out to the Town Board. For those that may not know what it was then, they recommended and the Town Board approved the change from forty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents to forty-seven dollars and twelve cents for nine thousand gallons, and she's quoting the quarterly rates. And from five dollars and forty-six cents to five dollars and seventy-three cents per one thousand gallons over nine thousand. I was against that increase as well, but was a little relieved that you postponed it until October and was actually surprised that the Town Board took the comments from the public into consideration. I am repeating myself from the comments I said back then, but the world has not recovered from the pandemic. If anything, it's worse. I find it truly disheartening that the Red Hook Water Board is recommending yet another increase to the Town Board six months later on top of what the residents just received. This is a four dollar and sixty cent increase for up to nine thousand gallons. And again, I think she's referencing the quarterly increase and a fifty-six cent per one thousand gallons over nine thousand increase from six months ago. From forty-four dollars, eighty-eight cents to forty-nine dollars, forty-eight, she's including now the two potential increases. A little more than ten percent increase in over a year. That is unheard of. With spring and summer around the corner, water usage will be higher than normal. As you know, the cost of everything has gone through the roof, whether it's gas to fill the vehicles, oil and propane, heat homes, groceries. I'm trying to paraphrase as best as I can, Renee, uh, to put on the table or the recent dramatic increase from Central Hudson to pay for electricity. It has to stop. We can't take anymore. Everyone's pockets are empty. As far as the electricity, it doesn't matter whether you're part of the Hudson Valley Community Power Program or join the community's, community solar project or not, the increases there. That is a fact. I'm part of the power program and my monthly bills, which are supposed to be a set amount, have increased with no notification. The Red Hook Water Board's recommendation, if approved by the Town Board, just adds to the stack of bills residents are struggling to pay for. I'm sure senior citizens who are on a fixed income are feeling the pain of all these increases or those that may have lost their jobs because of the pandemic, or even those that just started a new job or trying to get back on their feet. Now is not the time to throw another increase in our bills. The Town of Red Hook Town Board has the fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. Please give the taxpayer some breathing room to catch up. It's like we are all being punched in the face, no matter what direction we are in. Now this for me, I'm here. Those are the two written comments. Is there anybody with us this evening who would, um, like to, uh, add to those comments? If so, would you kindly raise your hand so I can see that you are interested? Any hands raised here before we, okay, very good. Um, so, uh, hearing no other, uh, public hearing comments, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
No move.
Thank you, Bill Hamel. All in favor, Christine Kane?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
And Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Well, that is the first item on the agenda. And, um, Town Board members, uh, could you let me know, uh, what your thoughts are at the last meeting when setting up this public hearing? I suggested we might, uh, go ahead and consider postponing again, uh, this year, six months until October, uh, the request by the Water Board, um, to, uh, make that increase. Um, would anybody like to, uh, chime in on that? How you feel about that? Bill Hamel, start with you.
Okay, I, I have no objection to putting it off six months. We did it before with no apparent ill effects, and I think it would be fine to wait another six months.
Sure. Okay, good. And I think the points raised about gas, gas prices and, and, uh, electric, although I will say the community choice aggregation, uh, has saved a lot of folks, a lot of money. Um, the Central Hudson supply rate was more than triple, uh, the other month and is still almost double, uh, with community choices. Um, Christine Kane?
Uh, yeah, I would support delaying. I mean, the idea of the Water Board was to have an annual increase for five years, um, so that people wouldn't have a huge increase all at once. But, um, so we delayed it till October last year, and so I think it makes sense to delay it till October this year. Still is on an annual schedule, but it does, um, I mean, unless we change it in October, but, um, it does, um, take into consideration, you know, the, the status of many points that were brought up in the comments you read.
Okay. Thank you, Christine. Julia?
Yep, I'm also in agreement with that. I thought, I thought the points were good. I appreciate the long-range vision expressed by the Water Board, but I think we can accomplish the single while, um, spreading out the impact.
Jacob?
Yep, same thing as everybody else.
Okay. That's a concurrent. Very good. Okay, um, sounds like we, uh, unanimously feel that that's appropriate, uh, to do that. So we do have resolution number ten uh, dated March twenty-third, and it's approving the water rates and charges. So we need to make a modification then uh, down at the now therefore be resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook that the Water District Number One rates and charges set forth on the attached schedule are hereby approved with an effective date. Would that be clear to everybody with an effective date? Of October one twenty-two. Chris Shaw, are you okay with that language?
You're just changing April to October, right?
That's right.
Right.
Very good. So, uh, modified resolution number ten and I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Christine Kane, um, any further discussion? All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
I'll keep track of you. Don't worry.
Cast keeps changing. Every meeting is all new people every time, Robert.
It, you know. No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. And so there's no excuse for me not rattling them off. I'll do it alphabetically now. Make life easier. Okay, let's jump over to, shall we, um, second item on the agenda, which is a resolution dated, resolution number eleven, March twenty-three. That back to share screen here. Okay. Um, for the folks at home, we received, whoa, that's out of order. Okay, there we go. That is not, okay, so it's a resolution awarding, um, the contract to, uh, charge point, um, for the installation of the fast chargers. We applied for and were successful and receiving a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars um, from New York State for these fast chargers. If you have been following along and or reading your Central Hudson, um, communications, uh, they've been speaking about how, um, the cost of owning and operating an electric vehicle is now, uh, more competitive um, as comparative to, uh, a gasoline or a diesel, uh, vehicle. And so, um, the Town of Red Hook has been now for the last few years, uh, doing its part to apply for grants to help build out the infrastructure so that, uh, that transition, which I think is now acknowledged, um, widely, um, can happen uh, sooner rather than later. And if you've heard me speak about, you know, other countries that are ahead of us, Norway, I think, um, over eighty percent of all new vehicles are all electric in Norway now. So, um, we have this, uh, uh, resolution, which is to award to charge point. We have a memo from our engineers and, uh, speaking about, uh, the charge point system and the consistency. And are there any questions, folks? Okay, so it's a resolution authorizing the contract award for fast charging pedestals in the town of Red Hook. And thanks again to our energy committee for their work in this brand. Okay, and I so move. Is there a second?
Next second.
Oh, okay. Bill Hamel, uh, all in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to,
And we will, we will make sure that these, um, pedestals charging will work with our vans when we get the vans, right? I realize the van is a different contract, but we do know we have to make sure everything's works.
Everything does. Now the vans, so we're gonna have to go out for another contract since those vans aren't coming. Those vans were only level two, which we already have those charges, chargers. But maybe in the delay that we've incurred, maybe there will be vans that
That could go with the fast chargers, right? Okay.
There, there are now. So let's hope that's what we get. We may have to modify our R F P to allow for that.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, we should do that.
Okay, thank you, Christine. All right, um, uh, lastly, uh, next up, we have resolution number twelve. It's authorizing the agreement for professional services between the Town of Red Hook and Granicus relating to short-term rentals. If you've been following along the last couple of meetings, um, we had a presentation um, on this topic. Um, this company, uh, does this, uh, for many communities and in particular for Duchess County, they already have a contract. Duchess County has an intermunicipal agreement with with municipalities that want to work with, uh, the county and Granicus. And what the county will do is that they will pay for two of the five modules um, that we are interested in, uh, up to a total of five thousand, so that overall eleven thousand, uh, plus figure uh, net to us will be six thousand and change. And, um, there will be the coordination of the data, obviously, with the same, uh, company in place for both the town and the county. So our resolution includes the total amount, but just know that the county, as you see in the information they provided, will pay for up to five thousand dollars for those two modules.
That's a reimburse, on a reimbursement basis.
That, that is that is correct. So, um, okay, are there, are there any questions about that? Okay, resolution number twelve dated March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, authorizing the agreement for professional services between the Town of Red Hook and Granicus relating to short-term rentals. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Was Christine?
Yep.
Uh, any further discussion? Uh, not Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Very good. All right, we also now have the intermunicipal agreement that we need to approve. That would be, are we on fourteen, Deanna? I'm going too fast for my
Thirteen.
What's that?
I think it's thirteen, right?
Thirteen?
Eddie, Deanna?
We don't want to skip thirteen.
I believe it's thirteen. Yeah, we started with ten tonight, so then this will be thirteen.
We're thirteen. We're, we're not like with the elevator. We don't skip thirteen. Okay. Um, authorizing the execution of an intermunicipal agreement with Duchess County regarding assistance with the cost of short-term rental program monitoring, as I've explained, ready.
I want to roll down your screen.
There we go. The county of Duchess will reimburse a municipality for some not to exceed five thousand annually towards those two modules. So that'll bring us to six thousand and change, almost seven thousand. Okay, uh, I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? If not, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. We are now folks don't get dizzy. Apologize. Going to a six documents we've got for tradition as part of the approval process for each phase of that development. We have to accept the offers of, uh, the roadways. And not accepting the roads right now. We have to accept the offers, taking the roads, the roads built to spec. And also easements, necessary easements. In addition to that, we receive funds, so zoning incentive funds that developer contributed. That amount is crucial.
Do you like me to go through this briefly?
Do that so I can stop talking for a minute. That'd be wonderful.
I will. I'm gonna get this in front of me so I have something that I can actually, maybe you could pick that a little bigger while I'm doing this, Robert.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, this is as, as Robert Ted number six. Would you like to, um, can you find the map perhaps, which I think would be the best way to, um, understand this?
Sure.
If you could, it's towards the end of this, um, stack of documents.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then we can just explain where we are in this development. So the development's been proceeding. It was authorized by the planning board to be done in a number of sections. Uh, they are now up to number six of eight. So, uh, one of the elements of this particular section involves another section of road, which is actually the last section of road. Um, and so this, uh, what happens in these developments is that the Town, uh, Planning Board requires that an offer of session be made to the town uh, for the public improvement, such as the road, and there are also underlying easements, um, uh, being dedicated to Duchess County water, uh, and there are other, uh, utility easements, uh, being made available. The town does not accept these easements, um, as a rule until, uh, the, and, and road, uh, dedications until the entire development is completed. Um, it has the right to accept them if it, uh, if a development were to fail or to stop or fail to go forward, but the town routinely does not accept them until all of the roads are fully complete. Um, as the process proceeds, uh, the, uh, town, uh, specs and the town, uh, code require that, uh, bonds be put up by the developer to assure completion of these public improvements. So, uh, the town engineer reviews proposed, uh, costs provided by the developer's engineer. Um, and they, in this case, they required that they be revised because they felt that the numbers, uh, needed to be increased a little bit, given the uh, recent increases in the cost of, uh, materials and, um, the components of the road. Uh, and then the specs are reviewed both by our engineer and by, uh, the, uh, highway superintendent to ensure that they are in compliance with the regulations. Uh, so the resolution is then presented to the board for consideration of, uh, acceptance of the offers of session for this road uh, for access and stormwater easements, snow storage easements. Those are to be accepted um, as irrevocable offers, meaning the town can accept them at any time. Um, and then, uh, the, uh, town engineer has provided, um, a letter, uh, recommending acceptance Recommending acceptance of the amount of the bond for section six is 431,807. And that's recited in the resolution that a bond in that amount would have to be put up. As a condition to the execution of that subdivision plat. There's a hold harmless agreement, there will be title insurance commitment to support the. Right of the people signing to execute those documents in favor of the town. And then we also look for the delivery to the water authority. Of bonds that are sufficient, determined to be sufficient to cover the water and sewer lines in this particular section. And then the town looks for easement costs to be updated. Because the engineer will have to do inspections. To ensure that these are all being built to town spec. And then there's a, there's an incentive zoning fee that will be required again as a condition of signing the plat for number six. This is in the amount of 145,419 based on the way that the fee is computed. For a pro-rata portion of the 33 incentive zoning units that were part of this plat. Now this resolution, this is what the resolution will approve.
Okay, are there? Any questions to onboard members about the documents and have a chance to look them over? Exciting ways, but you, you understand the, the premise, which is they're putting up money to ensure that these improvements are made. Or a bond in this case. And they are making payment for the incentive zoning fees that correspond with this phase. And you know, we'll see how much we ultimately get out of this development. But it was estimated to be, I think, 660,000 dollars, it's likely to be a little bit higher than that with. The change in valuations of properties in the town of Red Hook.
Right, and I should mention that the code requires that the amounts be increased over time based on the median. House price, and as those have gone up, the amount of the incentive zoning fee is adjusted a little bit. So that was taken into account in these computations.
That is true. Yeah, okay. Any questions now, all right? This is resolution 14 regarding offers of session for roads and easements for tradition at Red Hook. Section six, or as we like to call it, face six, an ISO move, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. It's Christine Knight, thank you. Any further discussion, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Bill Hamel, thank you very much. Okay. He has some dedicated volunteer slash guests this evening to talk to us. Have a discussion, not necessarily a decision, but a discussion of potential. CDBG monies for the folks at home, you are familiar with one of the very first federal packages. That was passed back in 2020, the CARES Act. The CARES Act came with a certain amount of funding, not all of it was allocated. Some of the money went through DHCR. And they've come back to counties and towns and villagers and said. We've got a mechanism to deliver. Dollars locally. And this CDBG grant. A little bit different than normal program. And so we have with us tonight, Christina, you're with us, I believe.
Hi.
Christina heads up our economic development committee. And would you like to begin to describe, maybe start with. Generally, the two or three ideas that you all have, and then we'll break out and. And maybe you'll do the first one, is that right?
Um, yeah, that sounds great. I can just give a brief, like a real brief summary of the grant. And I'm here with, with Ken Migliorelli and. John from Red Hook Responds, who might be able to speak a little bit more specifically about. Two of the ideas that, that we potentially have for this grant, so. Summary is basically, it's, the list of eligible activities is very broad. It's focused on job creation, job retention, and as you said, COVID recovery. The deadline for the grant is June 30th, but the funds are first come, first served. The grant will be awarded in amounts between 300,000 and 5 million maximum. There's also, there's depending on different parts of the grants, there's other limitations within it. One of them is farm worker housing, which is something we're looking at, that has a specific limit of 1 mil, 1 million. Although there might even be some more flexibility within that, depending on how the, how the application is structured. Applicants are encouraged to include multiple projects within one grant application. There are applicants range from, you know, counties, towns across the state. They, funds are to be used within 12 months, but maybe 18 for certain projects, depending on the specifics. And the grant allows for 5% of the funds to be allocated towards administrative costs. Like specific consultants that would handle running the program and the compliance. So one of the potential projects that the EDC was looking at was specific to rehabilitation of farm worker housing. Because that was one of the specific projects that was outlined as. Or highlighted as specifically compatible with this grant. So we reached out and personally connected with nine of the farms within the town. To quantify their, their needs and their potential grant. Compliance, and of those nine, we received. Detailed responses from five of the farms with potential projects. And the total amount for, for those potential projects that seem to dovetail with the grant would be about. 1.4 million as detailed by our farmers. Ken, I don't know if you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Well, I mean, it's, some of the things my farm and some of the other farms wanna do. Are to renovate buildings, some of us have outdated trailers. That are probably 30 plus years old, so it would be nice to have newer trailers that are better insulated. And more comfortable for the workers. And so that's pretty much, it's, for all of us, it's a pretty large capital expenditure. So to have monies to help us. Defray the cost would be great, so. Anybody have any questions?
No, I was just gonna point out that this, this funding stream, there has to be a tieback towards COVID. So there has to be some, some relationship there, either you're redoing the farm worker housing to make it. You know, to change out the HVAC or insulate to, to create larger space so that. You're prepared or better prepared. For this or another pandemic, right, there has to be a tieback to responding to COVID. If I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Christina, Ken?
Yeah, well, I think part of the tieback is economic development and economic boost. Cause that's related to COVID and the pandemic and the, the, you know, the. What, what different businesses have had to endure, so. The, you know, a lot of the funding is focused on, like I said, job creation and job retention. And the farm worker housing is one piece that has sort of been highlighted within this. This package as, as something that, that the state is looking at to, you know. Sort of a, you know, an easier, an easier shoe in for this sort of grant than, than. You know, many of the multitude of other projects that might potentially. Be, be applicable.
Right, and then therefore for certain businesses or applications, there needs to be a majority of employees that are. Low to moderate income, right, typically for the folks at home with community development block grant programs. Typically, we don't qualify in the town of Red Hook because the town itself doesn't meet that income requirement. But there are certain groups that are presumed to, to be in need. And that's any group that's age 62 years or, or over. In this case, what's different about this program is that if we can show that. The individuals that benefit are a majority of low to moderate income. Then of course it will meet that intent. Anything else, Christina, you wanted to, did you wanna speak about how the program works?
Robert, I have a quick question about the farm grant.
Sure, sure.
You provided the information for nine farms, but clearly there are other, there are additional farms in town that I'm aware of. Did you contact all of the farms and the others just chose not to respond?
Yeah, there was, there was an attempt to, to reach, reach everybody and, and there's still time to, to, to do that, so. There were, there were nine farms that came to a meeting, and then of those, of those farms. Five of them replied with detailed information about how this program could help them.
I think it would be helpful for the board. For you to at least have had a, provide information that you reached out to. I can think of three other farms, big ones, that if they just are not interested in participating, it's fine. But it would be good to have a fuller view of all the farming operations as you go through this process. This is my, my observation.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's definitely time, I can check with the individuals who, who did a lot of the outreach. And, you know, and make sure who, who was contacted and who, who declined, but, but certainly. You know, I think. What we wanted to do was demonstrate that there was interest and that there was, you know, a need. And that, you know, this might be a good fit for this, for this grant.
But uh, is there a list somewhere of all the farms in the, in the township?
Ken, I can probably get you a list like that, you can reach out to everybody. We can get that certainly from the assessors office, those that are operating. Um, that have met, you know, at least the minimum criteria for New York State.
So just to, to, to make sure that the summary, I understand the summary, Christina, it said that the. Grants amounts range from a minimum of 300,000 to a maximum of 5 million.
Yes.
And all of the projects that we're thinking of within the town go in on one application.
Yes.
Together, and as far as the agricultural piece that you just talked about, there's a $1 million cap for that.
That's correct.
Okay, so the five farms that have responded so far already have brought forth a potential of 1.4 million dollars. So we could already be over that. Cap that, so if there's, so if we have a million dollars worth of agricultural housing options. That we want to include in this, then anything else, we, when I know there's, you know, Red Hook Response is here to talk about something. And, you know, there's some small business outreach that you guys have been doing, so we, that would all roll in on top of that. So we could be, could be putting in a multimillion dollar grant request.
Potentially.
Right, okay. So everybody's on the same page here and at home.
Yep.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Julia.
I was just gonna ask a question about timing, because it strikes me that 12 or even 18 months is really fast. To complete capital projects that I think at this point seem. I mean, maybe they're further along in their development than I understand them to be, but they seemed fairly kind of conceptual yet at this stage. And so I just was curious how, you know, how you imagine that proceeding.
Well, um, I do wanna, maybe we should next jump to John, so he can just sort of explain the Red Hook response component. And then I can circle back and answer that, that question. John, if you're here.
Absolutely, I, John Herizny from Red Hook Responds, I'm, I'm one of the board members. I think you're probably all well aware of us and what we do, founded early in the pandemic to address food insecurity due to COVID. To date, we've delivered about 35,000 meals to the community, and I think most importantly, we still do about 600 a month. I hope we're at the end of the pandemic, but I don't know that to be true. And what I do know is that food insecurity existed here before COVID and it will afterwards, so I think there's always going to be room. For the mission for food security services and solutions in the area. Thanks to a very generous local benefactor, we recently procured a mobile kitchen to help. Sustain our operation and also help us source local produce and incorporate that into the meals that we serve. And we hope that that will be onsite in Red Hook within the next couple of months. What we would like of the project is to find a part-time food service manager. For the mobile kitchen, now we're, we're prepared to staff it with our very generous and capable volunteers. But we know that if we had a part-time employee, we would be able to really maximize. The effect of the kitchen and, and really improve its output. So we are definitely as small potatoes, part of this ask, we're looking for a part-time salary and administrative costs, so that would be about. $42,000 by our calculation, so we certainly need to piggyback on bigger projects. But I, I think we fit well into the. Parameters for the grant, this is a one-year spend for salary. It's something that we think we can implement and start up fairly quickly with approval, and it goes directly toward food security solutions. Most of our aid recipients are 62 or over or of low to moderate income. Or, or quite often both, honestly, and most of them are in the town of Red Hook, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
Um, cool, so, so to answer, I think to answer Julie's question. This, one of the, one of the first steps, if, if the board is, is interested in pursuing this. With the town as the applicant, would be to submit a one-page summary. Which would describe what are the projects, what are the needs, and who's gonna be the applicant. And that would go to the Office of Community Renewal, who would consult and provide technical assistance. And so based on that one-page application and their response to that, they would sort of decide like, does this make sense to proceed? With the full, the full grant application. So they're really standing by, like, ready to sort of hear the ideas and help the applicants through that process. I know that the EDC specifically has volunteers with grant writing experience who are willing to lend a hand. In that process, if, if that would be helpful. And the other thing that I think is important outline is that in the many conversations that we've had with, with. You know, different individuals involved in this grant, it's, we have the understanding that, that basically due to the pandemic response. This is a new, different type of opportunity as compared to past. Community development block grants where, you know, the, the, the funding basically got put into the. the, the funding basically got put into the laps of the state community developers and they have, um, because of the federal funds. So they've got a limited amount of time to sort of assign and spend this, this money quickly. Um, so just because of that, they're, you know, they're willing to, to help, um, really liaison through the, through the process. Um, and I think you have a, a lot of different types of applicants in this, in this grant than normally, normally you would, you know, at the county level or something like that.
Right. And, and for, uh, town board members and, and for the public, the way this, uh, program would work is that the town would be the applicant, um, the, um, either the farmers, uh, the farms or Red Hook responds or other ideas that we have uh, outside of, um, the EDC. Uh, project proposals is that they would be the sub recipients. So we would have um, responsibilities in administering this, this federal program. So it's not without work, uh, by the township. Uh, to say the least. And, and the way, uh, Haley had described it to me is that, um, you know, let's choose farm labor housing, for example, that the, the work would be conducted by, um, first of all, the town would have to go out and do public bidding. So we'd have to go and get a contractor. The tricky part is we'd have to have one contractor for, for all of those farm labor projects. Um, and then, um, you know, they, they can use subs or, you know, however they want to proceed with each particular uh, farm, uh, structure. Um, but the work would be would be done, completed, given to the town. The town would then submit for the reimbursement, the reimbursement come to the town and then it would uh, uh, flow through to the contractor doing the work. The timing, uh, which would be, you know, uh, a delay of a six weeks maybe for the first payment and about three to four weeks, they're hoping for any additional payments. So it would, we'd have to, you know, figure out a manageable uh, way of, of, uh, administering this, this grant, uh, through the community. Um, all right. So, uh, my question, John, so, uh, Red Hook responds would be coming in under job creation or Red Hook responds would be coming in? How is that, is that the category you see yourselves in?
I, I would still see it under COVID relief. I think that to the extent that the pandemic's ongoing, that is part of our mission. Um, it will continue beyond that certainly, but I still think that that's what we're doing now.
Okay. Um, and that employee or that your service base, um, you, you can supply some backup that the majority of the individuals being served are sixty-two and over?
Yes, we, we feel that we can create that database, basically. Um, it would likely, I mean, it would probably be both, to be honest, um, but I think we could ascertain, uh, low to moderate income as well.
Yeah. For sure. Okay, um, and as Hallie explained, we have, um, some particular public hearing requirements. So I think, you know, best for the town board to consider your proposals and any other proposals and maybe on April, next meeting, April twelfth, be prepared to, uh, call a public hearing for April twenty-seventh. Maybe shoot for those as targets. And Christina, you probably already have that information, the EDC does about what's required in the public hearing. Does that make sense for our next meeting? Very good. Um, anything else, John? Christina, can anything else you'd like us to know? Um, before we
Sorry, would you, would you send that list to Christine or I on the, uh,
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then the only other thing I'd mention is that we were, we were putting together, um, a survey that could potentially go to other, um, you know, small businesses within, within the town. Um, and I think that got circulated to, to the board members. So that's a possibility too of just, you know, doing more, more outreach about other, you know, potential, um, projects. I, I don't know whether it, you know, it might be a little late in the game, um, you know, to sort of get all of that figured out and, and sorted out, um, I, you know, and then get the grant written by, um, June, um, thirty. So, yeah, we were sort of focusing on these two other projects, which seemed to be more, um, you know,
Achievable.
Yeah, more achievable.
Okay. Yeah. And if you do do, uh, more outreach on the businesses, obviously we want to do everything we can to help our businesses. Just make sure they understand there may be some compliance paperwork related to the low mod income stuff that we would have to, you know, be responsible for furnishing to the feds. And, you know, not every business wants to be in that business of, you know, asking their employees for, you know, proof of income. Let's put it that way. Good. Uh, Ken, did you, you, uh, just the list? Any, any other questions, John? Anything else you wanted to?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Nothing for me. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Well, thank you all for doing all this work associated with it. Um, as we say
Robert, so there's just one thing. I think some, as Christina mentioned, I think, um, there are some most, uh, it, it talks about spending the money in twelve months, but there are some opportunities when it's eighteen months. And so we probably should just get a better handle on that and make sure we know. So for instance, you know, Red Hook responds, if yours would qualify into the eighteen months, then, you know, you would might want to revise your budget, uh, for an eighteen-month proposal as opposed to a twelve-month proposal.
I, correct me if I'm wrong Christina, but I think there was a part of that was you could ask for an additional six months and it may be granted. Is that right? Is that how we get to eighteen on this?
That, that, that may be the case. I mean, this, this, it is a lot of, um, there's a lot of details within, within, you know, what qualifies and what doesn't. And, um,
Yeah.
And so it really depends on the, the project.
Yeah.
Federal, federal money is always very complicated.
Um, Robert, does the board want to authorize you to submit a preliminary, um, request for evaluation of these two proposals so that you would be, uh, prepared to set a public hearing at the next meeting if the board is ready to do that? Because there's an initial consultation process that has to take place.
It does. It has to take place at a specific time between, uh, I just went over this with her today with Hallie. It has to take place between the public hearing and the application. So it cannot take place now.
Okay, all right. That's what she told you today. All right.
Yeah. And so we would want to consider anything else. We would also want to nail things down like, you know, what are we applying for? Um, are we gonna, are there going to be any matching funds? Would that help the application? You know, for example, with the farm labor, uh, housing, if that's oversubscribed, if you will. Um, is that how we want to apply for? Um, Red Hook responds, is that all you're going to ask for? Um, is there something else that you want? So, um, let's, let's just be prepared uh, on April twelfth to make decisions of what we want, call the public hearing, then we can have that consultation. Um, immediately in between, I've already discussed a potential schedule with Hallie at, uh, OCR um, between the twelfth and the twenty-seven. And, um, she seems to think that'll work out, uh, quite well. So fingers crossed.
Great.
Thank you all for your, your good work on this. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, how can I, um, all right, let's go to next item on the agenda. Of course, I've lost mine. Oh, all right, pilot program. Speaking of wonderful committees, we have our CAC and our energy committee too. Additional wonderful committees and they have for us, they have been working on a proposal with TJ who runs our recycling center. Let's see if I can get to. It's a refrigerant recovery proposal. Now, um, I will try to, uh, distill this to the important, uh, parts for us to know. So we don't get bogged down with too much information, but essentially we, uh, have been asked to entertain a pilot program where we would, because we have, uh, certified um, folks, TJ who runs our, uh, recycling center is very excited about this opportunity to remove harmful refrigerants. Again, when I say harmful, harmful to the environment. Uh, responsible removal and capture of these refrigerants is key. Um, when you, uh, give your air conditioner, for example, um, to an entity, there's no guarantee that that's going to be dealt with the impact on, uh, uh, or what they call the global warming potential is substantial. And there, remember you see it can be as much as two thousand times more potent than CO2. Um, R22, which I don't believe is now, uh, allowed anymore. It releases chlorine into the atmosphere. And so what they are proposing is that, um, in conjunction with having this pilot program that we get a shed work with Bard College, who actually already has, they've received a grant, they already have the equipment. And Bard would like to partner with us as well. Um, essentially give us use of their equipment. Um, and then there's, um, a group of volunteers that have been trying to promote these types of activities. I think they're called New York for Cool. Um, but we would have, uh, just a couple of volunteers working under the supervision of TJ. Um, everyone would have to be certified in, um, removing the refrigerants. There are companies that come and actually pick it up. You fill up these containers, they come and they pick it up and they pay you uh, for, uh, the refrigerant based upon, uh, whether it's pure, it's mixed. And, um, and then you're left with scrap, which is primarily metal, which then can be put into our metal containers and we get paid for that as well. They were asking for us to fund and we do still have twenty-five thousand dollars in their capital budget because we haven't paved yet the, um, recycling center. Uh, we need to, to take a look at some drainage before we go ahead and pave it. Um, so there is money currently in that capital account, but they're looking for a shed, a ten by eighteen shed. Um, for this pilot program and other programs, but for now to be used primarily to perform the necessary steps in recovering refrigerant from the appliances and preparation for scrapping them. Um, looking for a shed with a workbench, lockable drawers and the cost of which is about eight and a half thousand dollars, eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And this was an education for me and I hope for the folks at home to know that what's in our ACs and our refrigerators, while, while the refrigerants have changed over time. Um, it is important that we, uh, deal with them responsibly. And so this is, I think, an exciting opportunity. What do, what do you all think? You've had a chance to, um, read about it and hear about it. Julia, I know that you've, you've came to us from the CAC. Any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I, I think it's a really innovative proposal and I like the collaboration with, between Bard and the recycling center. I think it's nice to have those partners on board. Uh, I guess my only question really relates to, to the budget and the breakdown of the budget. I mean, really the bulk of the cost would go to the procuring of the shed. And, you know, this is a pilot program. There are any number, I think, of ways that we could discover that it's not as feasible as we think it is right now. And so I would be curious to ask, uh, you know, the recycling center folks, whether they have sort of additional uses for that shed if down the road it proves that this is not a, sort of a viable program in the long run.
A question I did ask myself and the answer was yes, of course. Um, and there's no shortage of, um, need, uh, you know, back there in our campus. Um, you've heard also our highway superintendent ask for additional, um, storage as well. And I should tell you that, um, you know, we've started to work with our engineer to take a look at the campus plan again now that uh, we've had that additional acre that we acquired a few years back. And we may have to do something about our salt shed in the near future. So we're taking a sort of a holistic view of uh, the campus properties as well. But, but the answer to your question, which is a question I already posed is yes, of course, we could always use more more room. They need to have a secure storage building, uh, in order to do this. They can't just do this outside somewhere. Both for the tools and for the materials as well.
Thank you. And, um, is the, am I unmuted? I am, okay. Is the equipment, um, that Bard has recovered, uh, received already uh, easily transportable or would we, we wouldn't be permanently storing that, I would imagine, right?
I, I couldn't answer that question for you. I assume it's easily, um, uh, moved. Um, Lori is the, the, the one who's made, you know, um, the offer from, from Bard College. I, I think it's, it's easily moved, but I, I can follow up with that question for you.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea and, you know, leveraging equipment that's already here in the town is great. I just would, um, prefer that the equipment was, you know, it's Bard's equipment so that we just sort of borrow it when we're going to use it and ta, and take it right back and that they're responsible for actually securely storing the equipment itself.
Okay. We'll, we'll look at feasibility. I guess the question is how often will we be doing this? What they wanted to initially is get rid of, we already have fifty appliances that we've collected over time. And so what, what they are proposing is that we get the shed and that we, um, get rid of that. Exactly.
Right.
And then open it up, do a pilot program, see how it goes. And then see if this is going to be something we offer once in a while, or it's just going to be a part of the offer for, um, our recycling center. And then, you know, we can build up a few more appliances as we have already and then work on it. You know, when the volunteers are available in order to get enough quantities so that the vendor can come and pick up, um, the collection, if you will. So that's all of what they want to work out right now. So the equipment also would be part of that um, initial trial, I think.
Okay. So, um, if we have a consensus of support for murder yet, then, um, is that sufficient because there are funds in the capital budget line?
There are, yeah, I would, yeah, what I would ask you is to make a motion to approve uh, the
This request, yeah.
Yeah, the request and then we'll, they've already, uh, called around to get quotes and we'll just finalize those quotes. Um, but what we'd like to do is just get your support. Um, if that's, uh, the case on, uh, launching this type of pilot program and in conjunction with that, um, the appropriation of eighty-four hundred and fifty dollars for the three items mentioned here, uh, three categories mentioned here. Would you like to make that motion, Christine?
Yes, I would.
Thank you very much. I would love to second your motion. Any further, uh, uh, questions or comments? Jacob Testa?
Nope.
Okay. Hi, hi, works too. Uh, Bill Hamel.
Hi.
Julia Solomon. Very good. Thank you all very much. The volunteer. Very good. Thank you all very much. The volunteers, I think this is so exciting. Yet again, probably another first in New York State, we'll have to see. But very exciting. We are doing everything we can. It's a local municipality for the environment. Okay. That concludes our agenda. We did get, we're not doing department committee reports tonight, but we did get a report from our highway superintendent. I wanted to put this up tonight because we've had a particularly, well, you don't need me to tell you, particularly icy winter. And for the folks at home, winter from a budgetary standpoint and from a snow plowing and sanding and salting is really the beginning of a year. We sure do get some storms in November, December, but mostly it's the January through March winter season. And so this year with all the ice and all the need to go out and salt and re-sand and so on and so forth. We've gone through quite a bit of our stock, our supply. And so Ivy Super is asking us to entertain increasing that budget line. We had quite a bit on hand already. In fact, that was part of the recommendation to go lower. Was not just the cost per ton was lower, but we had quite a bit on hand prior to the winter. But again, it was an unusually icy and cold winter. So the highway super has the ability to procure another three hundred and twenty five tons of salt at the current contract rate of sixty two eighty eight per ton. And as Teresa points out accurately, I believe that we may want to buy as much as we possibly can under this contract because it's likely the next contract is going to be higher like everything else. So what I would ask you is to please entertain a budget adjustment of twenty thousand dollar increase on the salt line for twenty twenty two. So that she can complete that contract. Okay. And you see, there's just a small amount left in there right now. And then there, there isn't any ability to go above the thirteen seventy five.
So do we, can we, do I motion for that tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you very much to appropriate from the fund balance, twenty thousand dollars, the DB fund balance. Twenty thousand dollars to the budget line salt.
And the, the five thousand dollar request for moving into the sand, that could just be a budget adjustment, right? Or do you want to put it in this? Motion.
Yeah, no, I think she's talking previously. Our salt budget was ninety thousand and was reduced. My recommendation, the twenty two war that the town and salt move into the sand but to bring it up fifteen thousand. Makes sense. We have ten thousand in the sand budget line to purchase our sand in the fall.
Right. So that could just be a budget adjustment if we need to do that. We just need to make this motion.
More, if she needs more sand, well, I think what she's saying is she doesn't need a budget adjustment now. Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion and did I second that? I think I seconded that. If not, I just did. Any further conversation? If not, all in favor of Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Very good. Folks, that's it's the agenda items we have for tonight. Did anybody else have anything? This evening. Okay, do we have any attorney matters we need to go into?
We do.
So very good. I wish everybody a good evening. Stay healthy. At this time, the town board is going to, going into attorney client. And that motion, is there a second? Bill Hamels and I, Jacob Testa.
Aye.
Julia Solomon.
Aye.
Good night, everyone. We will be pausing our video and our audio and doing this by conference call. We'll be back out if we take any action. Thanks very much. Thank you all. We're all back. Okay, we have exited attorney client. At this time, I would like to see if the board will authorize me to engage an appraiser for the purposes of litigation relating to an article seven proceeding. Is there a motion?
So, so moved.
Thank you, Christine Kane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob Testa. Any further discussion? Okay, very good. All in favor of Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Julia Solomon. And myself. Hey, it's nine thirty five. Want to wish everyone a good night. And we will see you again on April twelfth. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamel. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
And who did I miss?
Jacob.
Aye.
I was waiting for you. Bye, Jacob. Good night, everyone. Have a nice evening. Good night.